Five o'clock, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to turn the meeting over. Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I would like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Manning.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. We'll go through our March prayer with four of us. Rachel Kelly's family, she's got some sickness in her family, so let's remember that family. Her family, Kim Wyatt and Karen Alice, their brother has cancer, let's remember that one. Retired teacher Helen Lee West has passed away, let's remember her family. Danny Claire, he's a thummer from surgery. Ken, Miss Bell over there at Aladdin, Isaac Bell, he's an infant son of Christian. He's had to have three brain surgeries, so let's remember that family in prayer. Is there any other requests that he's going to pray, Liz?
I can remember my father in prayer, he's had a heart issue, he got shot back when he was doing real well, but I'd like to, everybody remember please.
I could also remember my brother.
Mr. Jones' brother. Any other prayer question? If you don't mind, let's bow to the Lord in prayer. Dear Father, Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. Lord, have a Father, bless his forward, Lord, as we make decisions, Lord, to better our children and our staff and faculty, Lord, and better the school system. We want to uphold these requests, Lord, have a Father. Everyone of these prayer requests that I've mentioned, Lord, have a Father. You know the needs and each and every one of these requests, Lord, that was brought up. Touch each and every one of them, Lord. Have it be thy will, in Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is awards and recognition of our countywide teachers of the year for 21, 22. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Tim Towns. I believe you'd like to make the presentations.
Thank you very much. Everybody hear me okay? I want to recognize our three countywide teachers of the year. Our pre-K through fourth grade teacher of the year is Ms. Chelsea Bush. Chelsea is a second grade teacher at Forks River Elementary. She was born and raised in the Elwoodwood community and attended Forks River Elementary and Smith County High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Tennessee Tech University. She began her career teaching seventh and eighth grade at New Middleton Elementary. She then taught kindergarten at Forks River and for the past five years has taught second grade. She is the daughter of Jennifer and Tommy Maynard and has one younger brother. And she and her husband Matt have three children, Lakin, Landon, and Alyssa. And this Maynard is with us tonight, so I'd like you to come up. We've got a plaque to commemorate. Congratulations. Ms. Lacy Williams is our fifth through eighth grade teacher of the year. And Ms. Williams was not able to be here tonight, she had a prior commitment. But I do want to mention a little bit about Ms. Williams as well. She teaches sixth grade math at Gordonsville Elementary. She has a bachelor of science degree in middle school education from Tennessee Tech University and a master's degree from Walden University. She is currently in her fifteenth year of teaching. In January, she started, January of 2006, she started teaching in Wilson County, Carroll Oakland, then transitioned to Smith County in 2007. While at Gordonsville Elementary, she earned a master's degree, served on a rural STEM cohort in 2019. Currently serves as a board member for ELP. She's currently serving as Honor Club co-sponsor. She hosts STEM nights at Gordonsville Junior High School in Tennessee Tech and was the Smith County Teacher of the Year in 2006, in seventh grade, fifth grade. She and her husband Russ have two children, Harper age 11, Abby age 9, that attend Gordonsville Elementary. So congratulations to Ms. Williams as well. Our ninth through 12th grade teacher of the year comes from Smith County High School. Ms. Tia Medley, she is a Smith County native, graduating from Smith County High School in 2006. She earned her bachelor's degree from Tennessee Tech in 2009 and two master's degrees from Cumberland University in 2018. She began teaching in 2010 at Warren County High School, teaching English. Additionally, served as an ELA instructional coach in 2017. She is in her 12th year teaching English and she currently also serves as the interact club sponsor at Smith County High School. She and her husband Sam have two sons, Tripp and Chance, who attend school at Parkview Elementary. Ms. Medley is with us tonight as well. I'd like to recognize her. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Towns, and I'd like to thank all three of your teachers. That is a, to me, is an honor to be selected as this and just want to thank you all three for doing a good job. Any other members you'd like to say?
I would think it's enough we can say to thank you for what you do every day. And of course, being recognized is an important thing. But still, at the same time, what you do every day shapes the course of our future because of what you're doing with our children, and that's extraordinarily important. And all the board members have all of you in our hearts all the time because of what you do. We appreciate you so much.
Okay, let's go on to consent items. I hope you've all had a chance to look over your board packets, read through them two, three times. Do I have a motion on the consent items?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On the consent item, E is talking about our summer school guidelines.
Yes, sir.
About, part of the paragraph down that talks about students registering and it says when the class is registered to the full capacity, the remaining students will be placed on a waiting list. Could you clarify that, what that means if we ever got students that can't?
Well, if you had, it's never been an issue, I know, but if it was, you'd obviously take the higher need based on appointment system, who was, you know, could make it up where they were at and so on. But I don't foresee that being an issue, a child not getting served more.
And when one gets finished with their coursework, then they call the next one to come in.
Okay. Everybody would get served.
I'm just making sure all students are having that chance to attend their summer school.
A matter of fact, we've usually, we didn't get as many as we had capability the last year or two. We was really lucky, a lot more students than we had, so. We definitely, with the funding, it's not a problem to get, expand and get more teachers, so.
Okay.
So, any other questions? Do I have a motion second, all in favor? I have opposed. Superintendent actions, you've all had a chance to look at those. Any discussions on those? Not, we'll move on to new business. Policy amendment 1.400, school board meetings. This is the policy that we have discussed and it's to change our regular board meeting, which is normally on the third Tuesday of the month, to change it to the third Monday of the month at 5:00 PM. And the only time we're changing is from, anything about it is from Tuesday to Monday. Do I have a motion on it?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manning?
I'll be nice with this. Are we sure we're willing to change the Monday night to Tuesday night? When I know on Monday nights, there's other meetings that will take place, commissioner meetings, county meetings, city meetings, and stuff like that. Because I know I'm one man, one vote, and I'll go along with whatever the other board wants to, but I personally rather see it stay on Tuesday nights, myself. But I'm just asking the, the other thing is in case somebody wanted to go to a county commissioner meeting or a city council meeting or something like that. And that's just what I would say.
Same for me. I also, sometimes I do attend some of those county commissioners meetings, city meetings. If I don't attend them, I didn't watch them. So, you know, I do have issues with it being on a Monday.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me. I made the motion so that might be a second where we could have this discussion.
It was.
I made it.
You've got a second right there.
Yeah, I made it so we could have this discussion because if I'm on the right page here, this was asked to be placed on the agenda by a board member to change it. So, I understand what y'all are saying, it's kind of hard. We've got three meetings around here, it's kind of hard to keep a finger on all of them. I just, I told him, I think I've been to six in three days. But I know county commission and city councils are important and things like that, and I kind of look in on that from time to time. But I, and I appreciate everybody else's thought process. I'm going to have to disagree. I'm going to say that I'm still in favor because I think our first responsibility is to the board, not what the city council's doing. So, and I don't mean slight by that at all. But if it works out better for board members to be able to attend, and that's what we're here for, then I'm going to have to kind of stay in that lane for my part. And that's just my opinion, and I'm just one person, and I won't be offended whichever way it falls, I'm just saying.
Any more discussion?
What about as far as Mr. Smith and them getting the board meetings ready on a Monday versus a Tuesday?
That wasn't, we didn't.
Yeah, we're just going to everything.
We were just bumping back the days. Yeah, we work for y'all, so it doesn't matter what day it's on, you know what I mean? Would there be, and I'm just asking, I don't know situation, Marty, would another day of the week, I mean, Friday would definitely be out, but Thursday or that, we're good, we're Wednesday because of church.
And Tommy, you made a good point, and I didn't. What about a first Monday of a week? Or the stuff that, I didn't realize.
It wasn't on the schedule, it wasn't on the county commission.
Oh, county commission meetings or something?
I didn't realize that it was on the same night as a commission meeting.
Just because it followed the same night.
Sometimes it does, sometimes it don't. Sometimes commissions will follow Monday, just like last night, it was on last night. If we had our regular schedule.
Which, what's their, I don't know what their.
I believe it's the second Monday. Let's see, it bounced, if, depending on the month, you know, it would still fall on most days.
Yeah.
Am I correct, like, if the Monday of the month started on a Tuesday, then theirs would fall backwards and then our third Tuesday would be?
It would be, I love town of Gordonsville and county commission are usually the same night. And I had that last night, so I believe the first day of this month was a Tuesday. So, you thought your second Monday and your third Tuesday were back to back.
You know, I asked to have that, I'm sorry, Mr. Winkler. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You know, I had that asked to be moved for the reason of the work related. And I'm, it don't have to be the third Monday, it could be the second.
Well, that's a good point, I mean.
I'm fine with it.
What if we moved it to a different Monday that, I mean, is the first Monday of the month going to land on anything, fellas? I mean, I know it's hard to say all the time, but.
Or a second one?
Could we, could we research and see what the county commission, and I talked to the mayor or one of you guys and see, and make sure and.
Well, let me make this suggestion. Why don't, if you would, you remove your second, you remove your.
Motion.
Motion and table this till the next meeting, which still have it in April on a Tuesday night, but give some research time of what night, whether it be on a.
Check with the mayor.
You know, a first.
Maybe accommodate everybody.
A first Monday or a second Monday or.
I'd just like to attend, either attend or watch, one way or the other.
Maybe we do, we accommodate everybody.
Yeah, you know, where everybody can accommodate.
I'd like to make a motion to remove my second.
Okay, you remove your second.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Then you go, okay, you remove your, okay. So, as it stands right now, we will take and reschedule, put this back on the agenda for next month, but we'll do some more research. And is everybody comfortable with that?
We can move it to the first and maybe.
Marty?
Sir.
You comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, rest of you?
That suits you all.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, let's go on to item B. New business, which is a policy amendment, 6.206 transfer within the system. Do I have a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, anybody? Questions or anything? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Let's go to new business C. This is a bid approval for two type D78 passenger school buses. I don't think we had but one, is that right?
We had one that bid, they never bid, and one that bid a price and we never heard anything
from Mid-South Bus and Murphy's Road for pounds buses.
Okay, so this is all you've got, then, right, Ms. Danner?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Jones. Okay, this is, we're spending money right here, a whole lot of money.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Sounds silly, but this is for a 78 passenger bus.
Yes, yeah.
So, the bus that we're asking to replace, is all these buses 78 passenger? I know they're not.
You're correct, I have one 84 passenger and one 72 passenger. The rest are 78.
So, when you, when you request this bus to be replaced, is it because of age or miles or what?
Yes, sir. Like, in only run a certain amount of years, 15 years, they go into an extended warranty.
And then you get an extension, but a lot of times because of the maintenance, you can get a two-year extension, and so they're maxed out, we don't replace them where they are.
So, I'm asking, not without being, sometimes I see our buses don't look like they're full. Could we put a smaller bus to replace these two buses and save us some money? Could we do it with smaller buses?
Well, then, when we run field trips, we'll have to run, for the most part, numbers have been down since the pandemic, yes. But with gas prices going up, we've got kids who've been coming back left and right. So, and I have just, it's a 50-50 split. I have some buses that are completely filled. We had three to receive for the first 10 to 12 minutes till we can get them off. And I have other buses in some areas that don't have many out of them all. But we have found that this picking of the 78, we can accommodate all the field trips, we can accommodate the routes and keep them within the time limits.
Do you remember, or is there, and I'm not asking for a specific amount, but how much cheaper is the next bus down, a 72? Is it considerably cheaper, or is it just $2,000 cheaper? Or is this a, is this a economy buy?
Well, the conventional buses that a certain board member hates.
That's me.
Right around $7,000 or $8,000 cheaper for the same bus.
But the same kind of, same seating?
78, it's a type C instead of a G, it's a 78 passenger. It's the hood engine, which are actually a little bit easier to work on sometimes. But now we do have some places where we have trouble turning those around. And the snubbies, with the wheels being far enough back, we can overhang the front or the back over the ditch or the little creek to make the turnaround that we can't do as easily on a conventional. But the board voted to get rid of all the conventionals a couple of years ago.
Well, now, you know, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Ms. Diane. What, now, part of this, trying to keep all these buses the same as far as expense-wise, as far as swapping tires? The, this bus, all the parts will interchange, most likely.
And updated train, she has to give her guys updated their price back the same.
Plus, for the record, a C bus is three years or two years. Got to come off the road quicker than.
Not anymore, it's been that way for five or six years, Tommy, and I know you hate them. But we have.
Never voted for one, for the record, I've never voted for one.
We have 10 taxi buses on the lot right now. Five of them are special ed buses, which they work perfect with, they're with a smaller frame, but they're still a taxi. The other five are on the route, the drivers love them, the mechanics love to work on them, and so far, they have held up as well as the other buses on these outer roads. Now, having said that, I'm going to take a snub nose anytime I can because that's what I learned in, that's what I'm comfortable in. But I drive the conventional all the time, too. Now, if Mr. Towns has taken a field trip, my first question is, can you drive a snub nose? Because you have to handle it different. So, it is for some drivers that have never driven the conventional, they have to go out and play with it to get used to how it handles compared to the snub nose. I would prefer all snub noses, but I started ordering the others because they were $6,000 or $7,000 cheaper and we could get the amount of kids out of them, same amount of kids out of them.
Is this, is this bus, like, is it, is it a standard bus? Are you, are you getting any options on it or?
The only thing on that, that's it's not a state required spec, is our hard drive system with the cameras.
Okay.
Everything else is state spec.
So, that's wired into the bus when you order it?
Well, it comes without it, Luver installs it, puts it in so that we don't have to pull all those cams off to run wires for six cameras and stuff around the bus.
Sir, I've got a question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just real quick. Thank you, ma'am, for all the information. Can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yeah, and I'd like to add one more thing, so Mr. Manning is prepared. Diesel's going up, I cannot get a propane bus except for a conventional bus. So, we start talking about fuel and the cost of fuel and saving money, my snub nose diesel's would be out of the picture. And we've had serious conversations. We were really close to ordering the snub nose last time, and then the diesel prices came down and we thought, well, that cost of the infrastructure, the set of propane, since diesel's coming down, we'll let it ride. We're going in the opposite direction with no end in sight in the air. So, I believe Mr. Smith is going to try to go in April and check them out himself.
Propane buses.
Propane buses, we've had them at the lot, let the drivers build them. It's set up like a gasoline engine, very clean. We brought one down for my drivers and played with it for about a week when we almost bought it the last time.
They say they're extremely easy to work on, and some we looked at before.
But nobody makes it in a snub nose bus.
I would highly caution going to gas buses, LP. I would go electric before I put them in the bag.
No, you don't, wait just a minute.
Electric buses are over $300,000. We will never get our money back out of them.
You know how much your electric, did she tell you how much your electric bus is?
$300.
$375,000. And she said the batteries won't last the route, you'll have to stop.
Really?
We'll have to have on each, and maybe someday, but on each end of the county.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
And there's all kinds of grant money for that right now. And Central State's just sold one to Macon County. But they're not planning on driving it on routes, they're going to use it kind of like we're doing.
A shuttle.
What do you call my green thing back behind you thing?
Steam bus.
The steam, the stem bus.
$300.
They're using it as like a little mobile classroom, taking it to different schools. So, the electric buses, I mean, at some point in time, it's going to happen. I've heard a lot of nightmares about the batteries and the mechanics working on the batteries, but the infrastructure is nowhere close to us being ready to go down on that.
The people even sell them, said the batteries go out well before the life of the bus, and the battery's so expensive, and she was ready now.
Most people just get rid of the bus.
But there's new technology being developed now.
Maybe one of these days it will, it ain't ready yet.
I've just had two questions, but I can.
I'll be retired before the electric buses are done.
I, lay it on, if y'all want to talk about electric buses, I can tell y'all you want to know because we just got a shuttle down there doing that job and I can fill you completely. Yes, sir, plugs in 110. But anyway, I've got two questions for you so we can get on with this. What is your title?
Transportation supervisor.
How long have you been in that role?
September will be 20 years.
And you made this recommendation, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
I got a question, Ms. Jones.
Yes, sir.
What is the next step down bus, passenger size, that is a gas bus?
Why would we do that when this lady's just told us it won't serve its purpose, Marty?
I'm just asking.
Okay.
I haven't priced a 72 passenger since I bought bus 56 in 2009. And at that time, it was around $3,000 or $4,000 cheaper.
I sort of say, we haven't checked particularly, but it was a very minor amount.
Yeah.
I mean.
It takes more of the engine than the other stuff on it than the size. The big savings comes, your flat nose versus your conventional. And by the way, those buses are $23,000 more than the ones we bought last year. And that's not me expecting anything else on them.
Yeah, I noticed they're going up.
I walked, died, Paul looked at us and said, you're not going to like this, Diane. Our last buses were $99,746.
Five years ago, that was $56,000, I beg your.
Pardon me?
Five years ago, that was $56,000, I know, but that's.
He's paying the two of them, who's $46,000 or something, two buses one year later.
And is there another price increase in June? Significant, is it?
Any more questions? If not, let's have a roll call on this. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McCale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, let's go on to bid approval for gasoline fuel. You've all had a chance to look over that, you've seen the bids. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jones and Apple, okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McCale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bid approval for diesel fuel. Again, y'all looked at all of this, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, second. Okay, any discussion? Not, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McCale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, new business F. This is our fees for the TSBA 2023 membership dues. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? If not, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McCale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. New business G. This will be tenure for teachers. This has to be voted on each person.
And there's a new one that everybody's saved because there was a person left off.
Yeah, and this is a new list, and I hope you've all looked at that, we added, she added one name to it. Everybody had a chance to look at it, okay. The first one on this list would be Andrea Strangenberg. Okay, she's at Carthage Elementary, do I have a motion on her?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is Carthage Elementary, Brittany Walker?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, second?
Second.
Mr. Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one defeated, Elementary, Hope Dillard, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's Mr. Glover, what do you say?
That's Apple Glover.
Yeah, okay. The next one will be Forks River Elementary, it'll be Susan Myers.
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Mr. Apple, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Destiny Gentry at Gordonsville, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gordonsville High School, David Baker Jr., do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New Middleton Elementary, James Gibson?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go on to next item here is discussion in my, I believe, I make sure I'm right, I